Welcome everyone. My name is D'Angelo Boylan and I am an organizer for Voice of the People, a member organization of One North Side. We are here today because our city is currently facing a crisis, a housing crisis. In the past three years, our city has lost over 2,200 units of affordable, single-room occupancy housing to market rate development. SROs provide permanent housing for the vast majority of people who live in them. And there are over 6,000 units of non-mission-driven owned SROs across the city. We want to pass our Chicago for All ordinance, which will preserve this vital affordable housing stock. Supporters of Chicago for All include Alderman Burnett, Alderman Dow, Alderman Poirier, Alderman Burns, Alderman Arena, Alderman Kappelman, Alderman Fierretti, Alderman Moreno, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tony, and Alderman Wagispack. For those of you who are standing with us today, thank you. We would also like to thank our allies and endorsers, starting with the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless, Sergeant Schreiber, National Center on Poverty Law, Lawyers Committee for Better Housing, Northwest Side Housing Center, Albany Park Neighborhood Council, Business and Professional People for the Public Interest, Chicago Alliance to End Homelessness, Housing Action Illinois, Jane Addams Senior Caucus, Kenwood Oakland Community Organization, Metropolitan Tenants Organization, and SEIU Healthcare Illinois and Indiana. We also have several residents from the Millshire who are here with us this morning. Let's give a round of applause to our supporters. Today, we are excited to announce that we met with representatives from the mayor's office and other city officials just yesterday. We had a productive conversation and we're thrilled to be making progress on this piece As a result of this meeting, we decided to postpone the introduction until June so we can introduce an ordinance that will be ready for passage and would benefit all stakeholders. Our lead aldermen have agreed to introduce this ordinance in June. Our goal is to get a policy put in place as soon as possible, and we have commitments from the city that that is also their intention. Even though we are not introducing today, we still want to continue on with our press conference to stress the need to take action, and we will take questions from the press at the end. Our first speaker today will be Robert Rodenberg.
I'm Robert Rodenberg. In the last nine years, in between periods of homelessness, I have called five single-room occupancy hotels my home. Since 2011, over 2,200 low-income Chicagoans have been displaced by gut rehab developers who have targeted occupied SROs, evicting all of the tenants, gut rehabbing the buildings, and increasing rents by over 60% or more. These SROs become permanently unaffordable to those displaced. Last June, when I was forced to leave my Chateau Hotel home, I joined over 850 other people who have been displaced by gut rehabber BJB Properties since 2011. Flat Chicago and other gut rehabbers displaced nearly 1,300 more. SROs provide long-term housing for over 6,000 elderly, people with disabilities, veterans, and working poor across the city. For low-income people, SRO hotel rooms are the only housing that they can afford. The SRO crisis is a growing problem. The Chicago for All ordinance is the needed solution. We need it now.
Thank you, Robert. Our next speaker will be Vivian Zo.
My name is Vivian Zo, and I work at a social service agency where we saw 1,201 homeless clients last year. The Chicago for All Coalition is taking the proactive step of preserving affordable housing by passing an SRO ordinance. This ordinance will require SRO owners to get a permit from the city if they want to make any significant structural changes that could potentially make the building not affordable. In addition, it would provide help and incentives for SRO owners to maintain their building as affordable through an SRO preservation and improvement fund. Our aim is for the city of Chicago to have a policy in place to preserve this critical affordable housing stock. This is not a new idea, as many other cities already have policies in place that maintain SRO housing. This includes San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Diego, Toronto, and New York City. As a city, we need to step up and tackle this vital issue.
Thank you, Vivian. We would now like to allow our lead sponsors who are here with us today time to speak. Alderman Burnett?
Thank you very much. We live in a city where we have a lot of people who are doing well, and we have a lot of people who are not doing so well. We need to be a humane society that helps everyone to do well. In a humane society, we care about all people, not just the rich people, not just the wealthy people, we care about all people. So we all need to come together and make sure that everyone who have a place to stay continues to have a decent place to stay. This ordinance is just calling on making sure that people who are currently living in affordable housing continue to live in affordable housing, but also have an opportunity to get that affordable housing enhanced. We stand together, myself and many colleagues, on working on this. We'd like to commend the administration for working with us on this. I think we're all moving in the same direction. We look forward to passing the ordinance next month. To make sure that we preserve and enhance affordable housing and SROs around the city. There's no mistake that you have us fighting for people to have affordable housing in SROs, which is low-wage working families, and you also have press conferences going on about the minimum wage. It's all the same thing. We all need to work together to make sure that everyone in the city of Chicago have a decent place to stay.
Now, please welcome Alderman Poirier.
So, good morning. I'm not sure I can top Alderman Burnett. I'll be really quick and just say, listen, affordable housing is a national crisis. We're short tens of thousands of units in the city of Chicago. And SROs, for many, is a housing of last resort. We have a very tiny universe of buildings that we're trying to preserve. All this ordinance does, and our proposal does, is set a process in place where there are incentives to help building owners maintain their properties so that people in this city, some of our most vulnerable citizens, have a place to stay and a place to lay their heads at night. I think ultimately what this comes down to is, we can't just be a city where we have islands of wealth and no housing for everyone else in between. So, this ordinance goes a long way, and we had a productive meeting with the mayor's office yesterday, and we expect to introduce what we believe is going to be a balanced ordinance, one that provides incentives to building owners, but more importantly, preserves these units in the city of Chicago. We look forward to the introduction next month. Thank you to all the sponsors. Thank you to Alderman Burnett and One North Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. We will now take a couple of questions from the press.
Yeah, so like I said, we are working with the city, but as of right now, it does require SRO owners to get a permit if they're making any significant structural changes to their building. They can also do an opt-out fee. That we're working with the city. We're working with the city on it. We're gonna have a meeting with the city within the next week to figure out, you know, what we want to make sure that we're proposing and what's gonna stay in and what might we have to negotiate. Yeah, the permit would require the building to re-
Can I you repeat the question?
Oh, sorry. So she was asking what the permit would allow for. So the purpose of the permit is to make sure that when they apply for it, the building
We have time for one more question.
Yeah, we can, yeah, who is speaking? Names and spellings of... Oh, yeah. Do you want to do that now, or we can do that, oh, right now? Okay, so we have Robert Rodenberg, D'Angelo Boylan, I'm Vivian Zo. Oh, okay, we can do that at the, yeah.
Is it fine if we do that after we adjourn? Okay. Okay. Sure, no problem. Well, thank you, everyone, for participating with us today. This meeting is adjourned. Chicago for who?
Chicago for all!
Chicago for who?
Chicago for all!
Good morning. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Yes. My name is Katherine Bisell Cordova. It's K-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E. Second name is B-I-S-S-E-L-L, and the third name is C-O-R-D-O-V-A. So Katherine Bisell Cordova, I'm the Executive Director of Chicago Fair Trade. Chicago Fair Trade is a coalition of over 70 institutions, including businesses, nonprofit organizations, congregations, universities, and individuals. We are all united in the belief that all workers everywhere here in Chicago and throughout the world should be treated fairly. All of us here today play an important role in the global economy. The consumer choices that we make here in Chicago reverberate and shape the lives of workers and producers around the world. Those choices can enrich or impoverish. They can empower or they can enslave. When we make ethical choices about our consumption and our purchases, we can put, we can be not just an engine of economic growth, but of economic justice. Today, Alderman Poirier will be introducing a sweat-free ordinance in city council. This ordinance, this ordinance will ensure that our tax dollars are not used to support sweatshops. Each year, the city of Chicago spends millions of dollars, of our tax dollars, on uniforms. As it stands, we don't know where these uniforms are produced. We want transparency. We want to know that our police and our firefighters that are working to keep us safe are not wearing uniforms made in unsafe workplaces, sweatshops that are often themselves fire traps. This ordinance is common sense. It's not pie in the sky. Other cities have passed sweat-free ordinances. Other cities include Boston, Seattle, Los Angeles, and St. Louis. It's time Chicago does the same thing. I'd like to now invite Alderman Poirier of the 47th Ord-
So, good morning. I'll be quick because I know there's one more press conference after this. This is Asian American Heritage Month, and we're introducing the Chicago Sweat-Free Procurement Ordinance, but let me also be clear, this isn't just an Asian issue. It is a Latino issue, it's a global issue. What we're trying to do is make sure that anything that the city procures as it relates to garments have not been produced, manufactured in sweatshops, either here or abroad. It's just a humane thing to do. We're following the lead of 40 other cities, and more importantly, this is in line with some of Mayor Manuel's initiatives in making, ensuring that we are a sanctuary city, making sure that we're immigrant-friendly, but also, if we're gonna be a global leader in human rights, then we also have to put our money where our mouth is. So, I believe this is a progressive action in, to ensure that we do the right thing, not just here in Chicago, but also set the tone for other cities around the country. Thank you so much. We look forward to introducing this today. And Alderman Cologne, did you want to say something? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to, first of all, thank Alderman Poirier for bringing this ordinance forward. Representing the Latino Caucus, when he presented us with this opportunity, we quickly jumped on board because, to us, this is a form of modern-day slavery. To use children, to overwork them, to underpay them, and then to support them by using government funds to support those type of practices, that's not the economy that we want to support. So, on behalf of the Latino Caucus, we stand strong in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Hayes, J-A-M-I-E-H-A-Y-E-S, and I'm a fashion designer at Production Mode and a volunteer at Chicago Fair Trade. I've been working in the apparel industry since 1999, so unfortunately, I've seen the abuses of the apparel industry up close. I can tell you that abusive and unsafe conditions that led to tragedies like the Rana Plaza factory collapse are widespread. The apparel industry has a race-to-the-bottom mentality. Workers are often paid below minimum wage, not paid extra for overtime hours, and discriminated against on the job. When they try to organize for better working conditions, they are often fired, jailed, or worse. Further, the reality of the fashion industry is a confusing and long supply chain of contracting and further subcontracting. Unless we, the citizens of Chicago, take control of how our tax dollars are spent and insist on sweat-free goods, US-based suppliers and brands can continue to shirk responsibility and hide behind an ever-more-complex and opaque supply chain. While suppliers and brands may say that they are unaware or not responsible for the contractors' labor practices, we know that is no excuse. Brands are closely monitoring quality, delivery times, and costs, and thus can stop turning a blind eye to the human cost of manufacturing, namely labor exploitation and unsafe working conditions. Further, the passage of a sweat-free ordinance, which ensures that our tax dollars support ethical contracting, would utilize the large-scale purchasing power of our city to raise standards and prevent future tragedies, helping to create a positive sea change around issues of labor and safety in the garment industry, and help to create a level-playing field for businesses who are already doing the right thing in manufacturing ethically. It's our responsibility as citizens of Chicago to demand that our tax dollars are used in an ethical manner and to help ensure that preventable tragedies like the Rana Plaza factory collapse never happen again.
So Chicago Fair Trade is glad that this ordinance is finally being introduced today in Chicago. And we know from following experiences in other cities where they've already passed these ordinances, that in order for it to work, it must include mechanisms for investigation and enforcement. Chicago Fair Trade encourages the city of Chicago to join the Sweat-Free Purchasing Consortium. The consortium pools the resources of many municipalities throughout the country and lists ethical uniform suppliers on their website. Any supplier who is not yet approved by the consortium can apply to become approved, and if they aren't, don't meet the standards, they can work towards meeting them. If they receive recommendations and don't comply with them, then they lose their contract. And this is the enforcement mechanism that is so crucial to this ordinance. The consortium also has anonymous reporting mechanisms for workers throughout the supply chain, giving workers a voice without fear of retaliation. Joining this consortium is a key part of the ordinance, and Chicago Fair Trade is committed to pushing until this is part of the ordinance as well. We thank you very much for coming, and any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Do you have any suspicion that Chicago is letting people get into uniforms from sweatshops?
The problem is, we have no way of knowing, and we want transparency. It's our tax dollars, and we want to know for sure they're not. It could be, it could not be, but there's no way for us to know. This ordinance would let us know. Many uniforms are made in sweatshops, I know that. But we just want, we want to know. We don't want it to be clouded in mystery.
Well, I mean, the question is, we could do a FOIA and find out. Well, I mean, sure, we could do that, but we're trying to fix a much larger problem. And we know that other cities have already done this, and will be, I believe, the second-largest city to pass such an ordinance. The point here is, we want to get to a point where we're not procuring uniforms or other clothing materials from manufacturers that are producing sweatshops. The point is to put those folks out of business, or to get them to treat their workers humanly. That's the point here.
There's over 40 other cities, including, some of the bigger ones are Los Angeles, Seattle, Boston, St. Louis, and also, I don't think Chicago wants to be a city known as a city where you have to do a FOIA to find out where a uniform is made. I think that it's common sense that we know where it's made. Any article of clothing you have, it shows where it's made. I don't think, I think we want to be a city that's the biggest city that has such an ordinance, and we are a city that says, as Alderman Poirier stated, that is friendly to immigrants, that wants to be leaders in human rights and in sustainability. And these factories, in addition to treating workers properly, need to have certain environmental standards in place, and I just think that's something the city of Chicago, that that's where our tax dollars should be going, in the city of Chicago. Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Amisha Patel, and I'm Executive Director of Grassroots Collaborative. That's A-M-I-S-H-A-P-A-T-E-L, and we're a member of the Raise Chicago Coalition. Standing with me today are other members and supporters of Raise Chicago, including Action Now, Brighton Park Neighborhood Council, Chicago Teachers Union, One North Side, and SEIU Healthcare. For over a year and a half, grassroots leaders from across the city have been organizing to raise the wage to $15 an hour here in Chicago. Low-wage workers have been fighting for $15 here and in cities across the country, like New York City, Milwaukee, Seattle, and St. Louis, galvanizing the support of hundreds of thousands of people. Here in Chicago, 86% of voters voted in support in March of a referendum calling for $15 an hour for corporations that pay 50, that have $50 million or more in revenue. We are here at City Hall today with our elected allies to introduce the $15-an-hour minimum wage ordinance here because Chicago workers cannot survive on 825 an hour. A new report by the Center for Popular Democracy studied the potential effects of the first phase of this ordinance. A minimum wage increase of $15 an hour for Chicago corporations that made over $50 million in revenue. The report found that this first phase alone would generate $616 million in new economic activity. It would bring in $45 million in new sales tax revenue, and it would create 5,350 new jobs. But this is not a debate about numbers. This is about Chicagoans who wake up every day to go to work, yet still live in poverty. This is about mothers and fathers who work every day making money for rich corporations, yet still struggle to put food on their table. It's also about the Chicago taxpayers who pay for the public benefits for corporate, for rich corporations to subsidize their poverty wages. This is not a new niche issue. The formation of the Mayor's Commission is a response to the work of Raise Chicago and for fight, and to fight for 15. This is not an issue of voter support, but political will. Will Aldermen vote to raise their own six-figure salaries in this next year, yet deny $15 an hour for low-wage workers in Chicago? We need elected officials with a political will to give Chicagoans not just a raise, but the raise they deserve. It's time for action. $15 for all. I'm gonna introduce a series of speakers. The first will be Gloria Warner, who's the executive, who's a key leader of Action Now, followed by Darlene Pruitt, who's a home care worker with SEIU Healthcare, followed by Tanika Smith, a leader with the Fight for 15 effort. Following that, you'll hear from the three main sponsors of the ordinance, and then any other aldermen who'd like to speak. So first, I'd like to bring up Gloria.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Warner, and I'm the President of Action Now. Action Now is a grassroots organization of hard-working families on the south and west sides of Chicago. We are community leaders, and we dedicated our spare time to make sure that $15 an hour got on the referendum, the referendum got on the ballot. We hold this issue close to our heart because we realize that many of the problems in our neighborhoods connect back to poverty. When jobs do not pay a fair wage, the stress of poverty becomes overwhelming. The link between low wages and violent crimes is clear in Chicago. 89% of all homicides and other violent crimes in 2012 were on the south and west sides of the city, in the black and brown communities, with high rates of poverty. Decades of research have shown that there is a significant link between low wages and crime. The National Bureau of Economic Research reports that 20% drop in wages leads to about 12% to 18% increase in youth crime. Although many of our elected officials have chose to ignore this problem, poverty is also the root of educational issues. Family incomes is now the most significant predictor of academic, academic success among students in the US. This is a serious problem for Chicago, where more than one-third of the city's children live below the poverty line. Raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour in Chicago is one of the most important things we can do for working families, communities, and the economy. If the mayor of this, if the mayor and city council is serious about reducing violence and helping the kids do better in school, then they need to create a minimum wage of $15 an hour for Chicago workers.
Hi, everybody. My name is Darlene Pruitt, and I'm here to talk about how Chicago family needs $15 minimum raise. I make $10.65 a hour doing home care. I take care of people who not able to take care of themselves and provide them with service, skilled service that allow them to continue to live in their homes and instead of being forced into institution. $10.65 is more than the state minimum raise, but it's still not enough to live on in Chicago. Rent is higher here, utilities are higher, food, clothing, everything costs more than in the city. I have to, I have to make hard choices between light and gas bills. I have to choose between food and medication. I spend a lot of time worrying about keeping up with my bills. And I'm not just worried about myself. I have three kids. I'm grown, they grown now, and I have 22 grandkids. I know what it is, I know what it's like to try to feed and take care of young children when you're not, when you're not making enough to- when you're not -- when you're not making enough to make ends meet. And now my children are having trouble providing for their children. I get calls when they need bread and milk, when the groceries is just not enough to go, and sometimes I have to go to church food pantry for myself because I don't have enough to keep food on my table. That's why I'm trying here today to support raising the city minimum wage to $15 an hour. That's how much it takes to live in this city and meet your basic needs. We're not talking about luxury. We're talking about food on the table, a roof over our head, medicine for sick babies. And if we get $15 an hour, it's going to go real far. When I spend money on my basic needs, that's going back to the -- into the community and creating jobs and helping my neighbors. It's time for $15 an hour here in Chicago. $15 an hour here in Chicago. Just -- that's just the right thing to do.
How you spell your name, ma'am? Darlene?
The last name and first name? Okay.
One more time.
One more time? Okay. I'm sorry. My name is Darlene Pruitt. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tanika Smith. So, it's T-A-N, IKA, Smith, S-M-I-T-H. So, I'm a fast food -- I'm a fast food worker at McDonald's. First, I want to say thanks to all the supporter Aldermen who are supporting the $15 ordinance bill, uh, or who's supporting the $15 ordinance bill today. Today I'm here -- I'm happy to be standing here, backing the $15 living wage, living wage ordinance on the behalf of the thousands of fast food and retail workers that are living on poverty basis here in Chicago. I make $85 an hour, which is not enough to pay for my bills, is not enough to pay for my rent, is not enough money to take care of my essentials and everything else. My car note is $500 a month. My rent is about $500. Food is going up, lights are going up, it's not enough to work on $8.75 salary. It's not enough. We need $15 an hour. The cost of living in Chicago is getting too expensive. So, I'm here on behalf of SEIU, Chicago ActionNow, and all the support organizations here supporting the 15 to help support Aldermen to pass the bill, the $15 ordinance bill today. Two weeks ago, I got arrested at the McDonald's headquarters. I was -- last Wednesday, I was at the McDonald's headquarters. I got arrested, and it was like the nervous thing I -- nervous thing to do. I was terrified. Never got arrested before in my life. I'm a college student. I'm paying college loans. I'm working on my master's degree right now, and it's hard because I'm struggling between work and school and paying for bills. And it's just -- it's a struggle. It's a process. So, college students, families, people that has kids, it's hard working in fast food and retail industries, working on $8.75, $8.25 salary. We need $15 an hour. I'm here to say thanks for choosing the bill. Hopefully, it gets passed. People out there, listen to us and listen to our voices. We need a bill, we need this bill to pass and help support college students, families, working families, and communities. We need jobs. We need $15. We need a union. So, I'm here today to say thanks. Hopefully, everything works out for the best, and I'll be praying. Thank you. Have a good day.
So, next, I want to invite Aldermen to speak. We're going to start off with Alderman Sawyer, followed by Alderman Moreno and Orina, and then any other Aldermen who'd like to say a few words. Alderman Sawyer?
Good morning, and thank you, Amisha. I want to thank everybody that's up here today that is in support of this proposed ordinance. But let me just be clear on this. We should not be here. We should have been here years ago talking about this. During the time that the minimum wage was instituted in Illinois, gas prices have increased, food prices have increased, utilities have increased. Everything has increased but the state's minimum wage. Had we done this sensibly years ago, we would not be here today because it would be tied to something sensible where it would naturally go up. So, I'm in support of increasing this. All we're trying to do is right the ship right now. And the people had spoken in the March primary. Out of the 103 precincts that had this ballot initiative there, 87% of those voted in favor of increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour. It's the right thing to do. So, I stand in support of my colleagues here today, to ActionNow, to all the organizations that are here, Grassroots Collaborative, everyone. I don't mean to start naming names, but everyone that's here today, let's get this moved. Let's get this before the council. Let's have a vigorous debate on it. I know that there are concerns about smaller businesses getting this done, but when we do this, we give people more money to spend. When more money is generated in the economy, that means more sales tax revenue, more revenue to all the other businesses that sell to these employees. It's an all-around good thing if we do it correctly. So, I stand in support of everyone that's doing this. I stand in support of my colleagues that stand in favor of this, and let's get this moved forward. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alderman Proco Joe Moreno from the 1st Ward. I want to thank CTU, One North Side, Grassroots Collaborative, ActionNow, and all the supporters of this. I'll be -- I'll be brief but strong. When my grandparents came here from Mexico, my grandmother worked in the garment industry, did not even make the minimum wage until she was introduced to the union. The union is what brought her and the family to where she could make a decent living. When someone in this city says, "I'm going to pay you the minimum wage," you know what they're telling you? "If I could pay you less, I would." That's what they're telling you. $15 an hour, quite frankly, is very reasonable. Every time we do something like this, whether it's plastic bags that we pass that we're not going to have in our city anymore, whether it's raising the minimum wage, whether it's getting better worker conditions, you know what they say? "It's going to hurt business." It's going to hurt business. Translation, it's going to hurt the people at the top, possibly. It's not going to hurt business. It never has. Raising the minimum wage, the historic raising of the minimum wage in the United States has never, ever hurt the broader economy. It's only raised those at the lower, and that's all we're asking, is to have a fair economy. Our economy has been splintered to those at the top having way more. The middle class is shrinking. We want the middle class to grow. That's what grew this great nation in the '50s and the '60s. We want to come back to that. So, please, help these organizations, help these Aldermen in support of $15 an hour. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Alderman John Arena from the 45th Ward. I stand here in support of a $15 minimum wage in the City of Chicago. I'm encouraged by the state taking action. We need to see that happen across the state. But as we've heard here today, the cost of living in Chicago goes up. The middle class has been shrinking, and that is what we have to change, and that's what a $15 minimum wage will help do. Grow the middle class. Middle-out economics needs to be the new model. By putting more money in the hands of low and moderate-wage workers, we increase our economy. As the study from the Center for Popular Democracy shows, $600 million in new economic activity in our city, $45 million in sales taxes to the city, which desperately needs that to do -- continue doing business on behalf of our citizens, and 5,300 new jobs in the City of Chicago. Who can say we don't need more jobs in the City of Chicago that pay a wage that you can feed a family, provide housing, and put food on your table? So, I'm proud to stand here with my colleagues. Thank you for coming today, and I'm sure they're going to take some questions.
Do any other Aldermen want to say a few words first?
Good morning. I'm Alderman Tony Fokes from the City of Chicago, right? 15 Ward. I just want to kind of report from the neighborhood and what you normally don't hear about. I was out there knocking on doors to promote the -- people to go out to vote for the referendum, and I'm proud that it passed the way it did. And, you know, probably people that don't live in our world, they wonder, they say, "Well, you know, you have government assistance, you know, you get link cards for food, things like that." But in the community, it's not enough money. And what end up happening, if a young person or anyone has $500 on a link card, in order to make ends meet, what they -- 99% of them go do, they go to their corner store, and they sell that link card at 50 cent on a dollar. So, they only get $250 for cash to pay the light bill, okay? To pay, you know, the heat. So, there's some criminal things that happen, you know, because people are not making the minimum wage, and that's the real, and you all don't hear about that, okay? It's a whole nother, um... It's a whole nother story to be told in the neighborhood that you all need to come out and hear about, and you'll understand what we're fighting for. So, I just want to say I am in full support of raising the minimum wage for $15 an hour. Our people need it. Right is right, and right don't wrong nobody. Thank you.
Good morning. Alderman Jason Irvin from the 28th Ward. Once someone told me this a long time ago, it said, "A rising tide should lift all boats." A rising tide should lift all boats. Some people's boats are up in the air, but there's still some people's boats, a lot of people's boats that are at the bottom. When I look at the Dow Jones and S&amp;P have skyrocketed over the last five or six years, but yet we're still fighting over minimum wage, something is wrong with that picture. So, like we said, a rising tide should lift all boats, and it's on us as council members to move this initiative forward because, again, 8:25 is not enough. The $15 is right for our people on the West Side of Chicago. Thank you.
So, we'll take a few questions. Well, we've been actually working on this for a year and a half. There is no reason to wait. We're clear in terms of the work that we've done in our neighborhoods and our communities. The research backs why this is a good idea. It's time for action. Chicago low-wage workers can't afford to wait any longer. We're ready to act, and we want to push that conversation forward. No, I actually think that he's responding to our -- to our organizing, right? That it's because of our work out in the communities and neighborhoods that he decided to move forward on a commission. We're going to continue moving forward that conversation as well because we're clear what that number should be, that that number should be $15 an hour for Chicagoans. Oh, it's too early to have that conversation. We're starting at $15 an hour because that's what our -- that's what folks need in the city. Of course. Of course, we're concerned. I think we want -- we're clear that what the need is in our neighborhoods and in the city, and what will actually move all of Chicago forward is a $15 an hour raise. If they come up with something short, we'll have to have that conversation then, but we're not going to stop the organizing that we're doing in our neighborhoods, keep talking to the Aldermen here to push that conversation forward to $15 an hour because it's the right thing to do. This isn't just Chicago. This is a national conversation that's happening, and we don't think that Chicago should be left behind. In fact, Chicago should be leading that effort forward. Absolutely. Five years. No, we actually are building off of that statewide conversation, right? So, we assume that that statewide minimum wage is going to increase to 10 or 10 or higher. We're absolutely in support of that, and we think that in Chicago, we can do even more. Great. Thank you all so much for coming.